Evening again, everyone. We're returning to open session. Let's see, first item on the agenda would be approval of the minutes. The team motioned to approve the minutes of February 28th.
So moved.
March 5th, 2019.
So moved for both.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Other comment? Nope. So, um, let's just get to the, uh, the issue with respect to 2931 Road Circle. Tim, would you join us at the table, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tell us what we have.
Tim White, Chair of the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust. We are here with a, an offer to purchase 29 to 31 Road Circle by the trust, a two-family. And we have an accepted offer, subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen and the, a vote of the trust tomorrow night. The purchase price is $539,000, subject to an inspection, and also recognizing that the buyer of the trust would be connecting sewer on the property. So we are asking a affirmative vote authorizing us to proceed with the sale.
Okay.
And the, um, the inspection, where's that? Where's that in the, uh, where's that?
4A, first page.
And then the, and the sewer is?
That's actually on, uh, it's a handwritten add-on, which you can have my copy of if you'd like.
No, that's all right. So it's one of the writers' references, seven?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, look, you know, I, I appreciate the fact that the trust is continuing to be opportunistic. You know, we've talked at the trust, you've talked extensively, as have your colleagues, about the cost of creating affordable housing units. You know, so this, this price tag is what it's gonna take to, um, you know, I think to try to capture houses as they come on the market to be able to create affordable opportunities for folks to live all over town, so.
There aren't too many two families in the town, I think.
Right, right. No, I think it's an exciting opportunity.
You know, ladies and gentlemen, we, we reached the 10% of, uh, under the state guidelines a couple of years back. But I think that this is just further evidence of our continuing commitment to affordability. And, and like Karen said, I like that we can sprinkle these affordable units throughout the town when the opportunity presents itself. So, um, thank you for this, thank you for being vigilant. And if there's anybody in the public who wants to chat, I don't see anybody. So, at this time, I'd entertain a motion that in accordance with Section 2A17 of Article 39 of the general bylaws that the board approved, the expenditure of funds by the Affordable Housing Trust for the purchase of the property of 2931 Road Circle pursuant to an offer to purchase dated April 18th, 2019.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Tim.
You're welcome. Just a correction, the offer is March 7th.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at, uh, March 7th, 2019.
April 18th is a potential closing date.
Okay.
So the offer is dated March 7th, 2019.
Do you need to amend the motion to reflect that, or?
I think the minutes could reflect that. So Sally Wright, okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for coming in.
Reserve fund transfer request. See, the police, Harbor Master, gentlemen, join us if you would. How are we this morning, uh, this evening?
Good.
Good, thank you.
Good.
So, before you, um, is a request to, for a reserve fund transfer to, um, replace the Harbor Master truck that, um, was deemed totaled by the insurance company a week or so ago. About a month or so ago, it was, um, it was parked, unoccupied, and it was, um, hit by another truck with a trailer and an excavator on it. It caused significant, it was actually pinned up against a tree after it was struck and spun 45 degrees. The frame was bent, sustained significant damage. So, and adjuster looked at it, and, um, they deemed it to be a totaled. And they're going to present the town shortly with about just over $22,000 in insurance funds to replace the truck itself. And we're still working on the amount that the insurance company would be reimbursing the town for the, um, equipment that's in it, that's either dan- damaged and can't be transferred, or they'll give us money to transfer the equipment from the old truck to a new truck. Um, to give you a little bit of background on this vehicle, it was purchased in 2011. It was part of a, um, a grant we received from the federal government. It was no town match, it was completely paid for by the federal government. It went through the budgeting process, it went through capital, it was approved by the Chief of Police, the Town Administrator, as well as capital at the time. It's, um, served us very well for the last eight or so years. Um, it's part of our everyday operations. We use it to haul the boats to and from the water, we use it to do maintenance around the harbor, we use it in emergency situations. There's a winch on it if we need to pull, um, things out of the water, such as, um, trucks and trailers if the tide's coming in quickly, if we're able to safely do so. So it does have, um, a lot of functions, as well as equipment inside it, um, computers and various things that may or may not be able to be moved. So we're looking to replace this. We do have a quote, um, before you. This is what, and expect, if we had to replace everything, this is what we would be potentially looking at. But we do anticipate that, um, a significant number of things will be able to be transferred. We haven't fully been able to determine to what extent things are damaged, because there's no truck to, power to the truck, and they don't wanna power it. They wanna get all the equipment out and then determine individually, um, whether each item has been damaged. They don't wanna short anything out. So, why, we're, we're looking to get the money approved now. It's gonna take a while to get a truck ordered, um, and in, and in stock to actually do the installation. So we wanna get, kinda get moving on things, get the truck ordered, and that'll give us some time to kinda work through the equipment, what can be transferred, what can't, and what the actual replacements, um, would need to be.
Do we know the operator who hit the truck?
We do know, um, the gentleman that, that did hit the truck, yes, we do know who they. They did, not only did they hit the truck, they hit a fence, a house, um, it was a lot of, it was a significant event that night. Luckily, no one was injured.
What didn't happen to any of them?
Good.
It's either this party or you coming out over there.
Castle.
Wow, uh, so $65,000 total, um, $22,000 from insurance, and potentially some reduction for the repurposing or replace, or insurance replacement of equipment, or most of it won't be able to be repurposed, right?
That's correct. I, I anticipate that we should, we should expect to see another $4,000 or $5,000 coming from the insurance company. It could be more, but I think it's safe to say we should see another $4,000 or $5,000 coming.
And, um, and Ken, we need all this stuff? I mean, you know, so, so when you go through this list, you can justify why you need every single one of those line items?
That's correct, yep. Now, some of them aren't exactly a perfect, um, for instance, the radios, there's one listed here. It might actually, if we have to replace the radios, it might not actually be one, it might be two. But it's a fair and accurate representation of the equipment that would be needed and the price that goes along with it.
And we're not getting anything new, or are we?
Well, again, it, it, um, we still haven't determined what's going to be able to be transferred.
I meant, are we, is it, or is this essentially a replacement of what we have, not an upgrade?
That's correct.
Okay. It just, you know. It, yeah. And I, it's, I sorta wonder sometimes, right? Like, you know, we get this, we get grants, and, and you're, you in particular are really good about seeking these grants out, but then we sorta get used to operating in a realm that, you know, would we have been here? You know, $65,000 for one, for one truck, it's a lot of cash. And, um, you know, again, I, I think it's one thing when you come to the town and say, I can have it, you know, I, we can acquire a vehicle funded with our federal tax dollars that will be X, that's great. And, and we get, we sort of, we, we lean into that, and now, you know, I guess I'm sort of questioning, is it something we need? Or is it something we've gotten used to having?
So that's, um, some very good, um, very good point there. I know that this is a hefty price tag, and I can tell you, I don't even wanna spend this much on a replacement truck. I'm, I'm very confident that there's a lot of equipment that we're going to be able to repurpose and reuse. I think the chief can, would potentially agree with me, I think there's a lot that we can repurpose and reuse. I guess what I don't wanna, I don't wanna be in a situation where I have to come back here and ask for another $5,000 or $10,000 to, to complete the truck. But I don't think we're going to actually arrive at this figure. Um, I felt pretty confident in that, and we would only get here if we find out that radios were short-circuited and some of the significant pieces of equipment that we anticipate we would be able to repur, is apparently purposable.
How about the winch?
Exactly, so we could, we could, we could, you know, decrease the winch and a few things like that, but, and I, and I contemplated that. Um, we are, one thing that's not on here is we have a significant bumper on the front of our truck now, we won't have that on the new truck. So we are cutting back in certain areas, and I contemplated trying to potentially repurpose our old winch, or, you know, whether it's really worth getting a new one. And then I looked at it, and I was like, it's only $2,500. And I know it's, you know, only $2,500, they keep adding up, but I felt that that was, um, overall wasn't that significant of a, of a line item, price-wise, to deduct it, because when we need it, it's very important, and it, and it serves a function. If we have a vehicle in the water, and, and it's something we feel comfortable that we're able to pull out before the tide engulfs it, and we have potential fuel and oil issues, um, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll do that. Um, we obviously wait for tow trucks to come and stuff, but sometimes that water comes in very quick, and we need to, to pull these out, so.
And have you had that situation in the last several days?
We have, I mean, just in the last week, we had another situation where we could've used it in Bear Cove Park to help out another, uh, law enforcement agency that was in the, the park that got stuck, and, you know, they didn't wanna call a tow truck, but we shoveled them out. But it does have, um, a lot of uses that come up outside of just the, the boating area. And we've used it in the winter, when vehicles get stuck, on town vehicles. So, you know, it is a good resource to have, and I contemplated striking it, and I'm still contemplating trying to move the old piece of equipment, if it's sound and reasonable to do so, I don't wanna move old equipment that's gonna break in a couple, in a, a month or a year.
I, I guess, you know, if you were coming before Capital Outlay, and you needed a pickup truck, and you, you never had this one, I just, would you come to Capital Outlay asking for a $65,000 pickup truck?
I think it's a little more than a pickup truck.
It is, it's a lot more than a pickup truck.
I think the answer, the question, the answer is, um, we're expecting, first of all, to come in at a lower price than that. Because, first of all, it's really not a sixty, it, you know, we're putting $22,000 because of the other costs, or the cost of the town is going to be less. I, I hadn't, we've already talked, Ken and I were talking previously before this, is that depending on, that truck is equipped with radio systems that also function, um, with the Homeland Defense, uh, encrypted networks that they're required to have to get grant money and everything for the Homeland Defense grants. So the radio pricing is a little bit heavier, and Ken and I were already discussing the fact that we, hopefully, that's a $12,000 byte right there.
Right.
We've also talked about, um, not using Motorola radios and go into, um, a different style of radio that's less expensive that does, hopefully, you know, is, um, Ken, which now are very popular with the police departments and stuff, and they're about a half, at least half the price.
That's $20,000 in radios, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess I'm, what I'm asking is, this is the piece of equipment you need, because this is a, even though, as you suggest, the price would come down, we're starting at a, a very significant, um, piece of equipment.
Yeah.
With all kinds of, with all kinds of other embedded equipment that is also very expensive.
Correct.
And I think we're, we're, we're expecting this to be, uh, over, you know, this vehicle to last, like, probably over 10 years, probably. Um, I think the mileage on this vehicle was, what, 37,000 miles on the old vehicle?
Around that, not, yeah.
Yeah, pretty low.
So, you know, it's, it's a vehicle that we expect, I would probably say between 10 and 15 years of service. It's not like it's gonna, uh, and that's one of the concerns, especially with some of the smaller items. I really don't wanna invest, you know, like, oh, we can take this light off, and that's, we'll save $100, when I'm just gonna have to replace that light.
Yep, yep.
Because the wires are corroded, and the interior is corroded, we're gonna end up replacing it the, the next year, so.
Yep.
You know, I mean, some of the bigger items, definitely, we can try to do, and I know that we were talking about the possibility of a different toolbox to keep equipment in, as opposed to the two side boxes. So I mean, I, I think we're looking at this, but we didn't wanna hem ourselves into a price that would be stuck with the vehicle we didn't need.
And then, um, the amount requested is 65, so we'd, we'd, we'd make the cash available, we'd get reimbursed, but reimbursed. Um, but it says present value, present balance in the account's 51, how does that work? Is that net?
That actually, um, because it's going to Capital Outlay money, it goes back, uh, here's Capital Outlay, it's under the police department budget.
We're still in the process of redoing our cruisers, so the $51,000, it's actually a little bit less than that, I think now, as we've been paying off the bill. So, um, that's money left, that money's being designated for the police cruisers that are being replaced.
Yeah, we can account for this completely separately. Um, the other thing I could offer, if you want, Karen, is I could, um, work with the chief and, and Ken to, um, to report out to you what the, you know, what they end up changing off of this, whether the, you know, like the chief just said, if the radios, if we get the different style radio, um, that the rest of the department is using.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that.
Don't go with the toolbox that's there.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, and as long as you're gonna approach it that way, I'm, I'm fine with it. But it, it just, it's a lot of money.
I was, I was gonna use the approach my daughter uses on me all the time, that because this is a special sale, she's actually saving me money.
Yeah, yeah.
I have to do it now?
Yeah, and, uh, I try that too, and I'm always asked, where's the money I'm saving? And I somehow can't come up with it, but I appreciate it.
And I don't mind coming back and reporting to you about what the final truck contains and what the final price is, either, I don't mind doing that.
I, I appreciate it, and as long as you're gonna take that approach in, in acquiring it, I'm, I'm good.
So Ken, sorry, sorry. I was just gonna clarify, the numbers in here, um, we're asking the board for 42, 9, 19, 90, is that right?
Um, I think, I think we were asking for the 65, and then when the money comes back from the insurance company, it'll just go in.
That's how we usually do it, I think, yeah.
Just to comment a quick one, you know, I, I went through the list too, and saw the prices, but, you know, I'm familiar with the, the work that the Harbor Master does. You know, it's a, it's a maritime land mission, um, multipurpose. You know, I, I think the kinda features that I see here are planned so that the truck lasts, it's functional, and it can perform the work that we call upon it to do. We have, you know, we have the Hingham Harbor, we have the shipyard, we have the Back River. We need something stout, so, I'm okay with this. I'll entertain a motion to recommend the transfer from the reserve fund to the Hingham Police Harbor Master Capital Outlay Motor Vehicle count in the amount of $65,012.90.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We were just noting, um, that Ken said, well, the boats are gonna be in the water next two weeks from now?
Yeah, they'll be in the water by the end of the week, too.
That's amazing.
He's in the water 10 months out of the year.
That's amazing.
We need the right equipment to carry out that mission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Say what?
They'll, they'll know. What the truck? They'll know, are they gone?
Are you going next door right now?
I'm going, Howard, you go.
Okay. Nope, I just didn't.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we have a couple of votes to take, um, notwithstanding the fact that this meeting is shorter than most. I think my colleague's been here for the last, like, five days in a row.
And tomorrow, too.
I was getting yesterday, I'll be here tomorrow. So, we're busy. Okay, um, all right. We've got, uh, a vote with respect to a request for a response to the town at Hingham's Ascertainment for Cable Television Renewal License to Comcast.
Sure, so this is, uh, we're working right now with, uh, Bill Solomon, who's the town's attorney on all things cable, uh, as well as the Cable Advisory Committee on negotiations with Comcast for the long-term 10-year contract. And as, as Bill writes in his note here, they, they refer to that as the, um, as the informal process, as a form, there's a law that, that allows for those discussions to occur prior to an RFP being issued. But, um, we need to come to an agreement and a new contract, but prior to August 13th, 2019. So what Bill is asking is that you authorize me to issue an RFP to Comcast to enter into a new agreement with them. It's a procedural, it's a procedural vote at this point.
And the, the, the final specification of that contract would then be subject to negotiation?
Uh, that's right, and that's what we're finalizing now, we're finalizing, we're, we're in the middle of that. I'm actually meeting with them on Thursday.
Okay.
Um, as a, another step, I've met with Bill Solomon twice, and John Rice, and a few others from the, from the Cable Advisory Committee.
Because with, I know with Verizon, right, we got some agreement around HD, HD content, right?
And, and we're working on that with these guys, um, there is, I can give you an update, um, on the, on the proceedings, maybe at another time, but we're, um, but we're making progress.
Okay.
Talk about a niche business, huh?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Special cable.
They don't have that at Bridgewater, huh?
We know where that is. All right, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the Town Administrator to forward the request for a response to the town of Hingham's Ascertainment for Cable Television Renewal License to Comcast.
So moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right, liquor, what do we do without liquor?
I, for one, do not know. Mary, when Mary watches this, you know we're gonna be in a lot of trouble.
Left you alone.
All right, Glenn, I take it you're all right with the, um, Hingham Youth Hockey Social?
Yes.
Okay, referring to the chief, ladies and gentlemen seated in the audience with us. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Jeff Chisholm on behalf of Hingham Youth Hockey, for the Hingham Youth Hockey Social to be held at the Hingham Community Center on Saturday, March 23rd, 2019, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Children's Craft Market, you good on that, folks?
Chief, you're good on the craft market?
Yes, yeah, that's the only thing that they do quite a lot.
Okay.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the third annual Spring Children's Craft Market to be held in downtown Hingham on the Tunnel Cap on Sunday, June 2nd, 2019, from 11:30 AM to 1:30 PM, and in conjunction with the Hingham Arts Walk in October.
Wait, what? What does that mean? Okay, to approve the third annual, two second, and in conjunction with the, so, do we know what that is?
That could help you out with that, they, they weren't able to confirm the date of the Hingham Arts Walk that they do every year. It's where they put out pictures and have artists in the different locations for all the stores. It happens that in October, they just don't start the date.
But we need to vote that tonight?
Well, we're trying to get it done when it's, well, it's not a school, but.
Okay.
Is it kind of a walk-around gig?
And you'd close the?
The, well, the Hingham Arts Walk is something different, but the dates that they do, the, the kids are on the cap. They're not, they do it the same day as the Arts Walk, because of the bigger crowd moving around and stuff.
I take it there'll be some kind of police presence down there during that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm just not clear, so we're voting on clo, we're voting on access to the Tunnel Cap on two different lo, dates, one we don't know.
Why don't we just wait and do the, let's do the October one. Doesn't seem to be a rush, yeah.
Well, I just figured maybe we could kill it.
So from 1:30 on, scratch.
So, to the organizers of the Spring Children's Craft Market, we're gonna take a vote momentarily to okay June 2nd, 2019, but you're gonna have to circle back to the other date once it's determined. I hope you have a very successful, uh, craft market there.
Me too.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, last item on the agenda is a housing choice designation application.
So this is a new program through the DHCD that allows us to get credit for some of the, uh, some of the affordable housing programs we've initiated in the last few years, and ultimately will allow us to, um, to apply for grant, grant funds.
I just, I think this is one of those, you know, access points that, with all the hard work folks have done, planning board and zoning board in particular, around 40B projects, um, you know, this now allows us to take advantage of certain, you know, grant opportunities and, um, afford us a designation in the state that, uh, you know, takes account of our, our work around affordable housing, so, well done.
I agree completely. This, this is a designation that most communities in the Commonwealth don't get. We've met our 10% threshold, and as you saw tonight, we continue to advance forward with respect to the issue of affordability for people that wanna live in this town. So, um, I think it's great that we have this opportunity to do it, and I'd entertain a motion to authorize the chair to execute and submit to the Department of Housing and Community Development an application to become designated as a housing choice community.
So moved.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right, I told you it was gonna be a short meeting, and I was serious. At this point, Michelle, is there anything you'd like to add?
Nope, thank you.
Thomas?
I wanted to congratulate, uh, Michelle Montseguer on her designation as a leader in the...
Women leading government.
Women leading government, yeah.
Mass Municipal Association. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's just such a, it's such an honor to work with her. She does, you do such a great job, Michelle. We're very proud of you here, and now the whole state gets to see what a, what a star you are.
As long as they don't try to steal you away from us.
Thank you.
We're, we are very proud of you. Me, uh, three things, quick things. One is, as Paul alluded to before, um, this, this is when the volunteers of Hingham come together and get the package ready for town meeting, and bring all of the business of the town over the line. And I am just so impressed with the stick-to-it-ness, the persistence, and the hard work of multiple, multiple boards and numbers of volunteers that I've, that Paul and Mary and I have been fortunate to see now on a daily basis. Um, so, um, it really is a testament to, I think, the commitment of both the professionals and the volunteers of this town, and I'm proud to be a part of it. The two, uh, other shout-outs I'd like to give, girl's ski team won the state title, um, great, great season, tough season, but great season. So congratulations, and on Friday night, I was at the Reggie Lewis Arena for the Division III National Track, Indoor Track Championships to watch our own Clark Riccadelli from Thaxter Street come in second in the nation in the 5,000K. So, it was really, really impressive. He was a fast mover, and he went out, he had a different strategy than he's employed in other races where he knew he was gonna have to separate himself from the pack. He led that race for 20, 20 of 25 laps, he, he led the race. So it was really, really impressive, and again, just, uh, you know, the dedication of, I think, all of our, our athletes to, you know, balance multitude of things, um, it was really impressive to see Clark, uh, Clark run. So, Clark Riccadelli, we salute you too.
I wanna kinda follow up on what Karen was saying about volunteerism in the community. And I wanna call out in particular, uh, my two colleagues, Mary Power and Karen Johnson, for the work that they're doing on the water company acquisition. This is an incredible lift, ladies and gentlemen, and, uh, the forum that we had on Saturday was all hands on deck. And, you know, I thought that the presentation that was made by Karen and Mary, as well as the water acquisition study committee, I know we messed that up.
Close calls.
John Asher, Sigfried, Josh Crumholtz, Joel Beerworth, Bob Higgins. Uh, we, we had, you know, Tom and Michelle, and Sue Nickerson, and G Montgomery, Randy Salveste.
Lonnie Fornier.
Charlie Berry, Kerry Ryan, Susan Murphy, John Coughlin, Steve Murphy, the police. I mean, we have, everybody's pitching in here to, to get the message out to the community that buying the water company is a good deal, and it's not gonna cost the taxpayer a dime. And in fact, we've shown, and we've convinced skeptics, that financially, we're gonna be better off. And, you know, I, I'd urge you not to... And, you know, I'd urge you not to be dissuaded by the rhetoric of the water company to try and convince you otherwise. We presented evidence that showed that they spent two-point-seven million dollars in advocacy, and some would question some of the tactics that were used. I'd also like to recognize Ms. McEever, who wrote a very informative article in the local Hingham Journal this week about the whole issue. I do really appreciate that reporting, ma'am. So I was at a water company meeting last night, and I'm going to be at a water company meeting tomorrow night.
Yes, you will.
And I'll probably show up by accident on Thursday. But this is the kind of effort, this, you know, I've been serving this town a long time, and there's no bigger issue that I've ever dealt with, so, you know, I really urge you to, if you're not paying attention to this, our website is full of information. You can go on YouTube, and Harbor Media, you know, has covered most of these meetings, and they've done a great job of it. You know, they're staying right with us, step for step, so that the public, you know, is getting a full view of what's going on, and that includes people that, you know, are skeptics, and, you know, the company is doing their bit too. But I think if you watch these meetings and you see some of the back-and-forth discussion, you'll see a very thoughtful exchange. The information is being presented in a very professional, balanced, open way. And at the end of all this, I really hope it's the conclusion that you come to, that this is not only in the best interests of the town, both now and well into the future, but this decision is a no-brainer. Can't urge you enough to really focus on this. We're, how many weeks out of town meeting are we, like?
Five, six.
Five, six weeks out. That's going to go fast, and if, you know, the first time you start to say, well, what's all this about, is when you pick up the town warrant, this is a big issue. It involves, you know, the finances, the operations, the governance. We've got, we've got some real talent, and, you know, we're up against a determined opponent. Eversource is a multi-billion dollar corporation. They can hire, you know, a whole army of lobbyists and, you know, accountants and lawyers. We're doing our thing without any public money. We're just, we're just putting it out there, plain and square. If we make a mistake, we fix it, we correct it. You know, the model continues to evolve in a very positive way. So, you know, with that, you know, I thank you for your continued attention, and if you're not paying attention, I think it's about time to start doing that, so. I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.